Help manage in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and residents who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as the National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to strong cities and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and sustainable outcomes. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional planning community, and more specifically, by planners of the city of Des Moines, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Connie Bosin, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month. And I encourage all residents to learn more and engage with the planning process in the city of Des Moines. So I think we have a large group to come up. So whoever's involved in planning in Des Moines, thank you for the work you do to make our community better. Do you want to say, Jason, does anybody want to say anything?
No, it's, it's, I just appreciate that.
Okay. As amended.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The item three is approval of payment standards for the Section Eight Housing Choice voucher program after review of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Redevelopment or Development. Publish small area fair market rents for 2026 as required by HUD. Board Communication Number 25-376.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item four, approving submittal of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator's Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Board Communication Number 25-377.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is motion to adjourn.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. We are adjourned, will reconvene at five for our regular council meeting. I'd like to call the order, the Des Moines City Council Meeting for October 20th, 2025.
I've got some good places.
Can't hear you.
Okay. I'll try it again. I'd like to call the order, the Des Moines City Council Meeting for October 20th, 2025.
Bosin.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a forum.
The next item is approving agenda as presented and/or as amended. On the consent agenda, number 21 is updated, the vote box page on communication from the Plan and Zoning Commission. Item 35 is updated, it's a roll call. Item 52 is updated, added letter from owners. Item 57 is updated, the vote box page on communication from Planning and Zoning Commission. Item 58 is updated, the speaker's list.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item three, approving the consent agenda items three through 40. And on this item, we have 40 for Coleman, a no. Six, Coleman wants to speak. 21, Coleman wants to speak. 30, Coleman wants to speak. 31, Coleman wants to speak.
Mayor, can I amend my request poll?
Yes, you may.
I do not need to have six, 30, or 31 polled. I have answers to those, so they can be acted on with a consent agenda.
With that being said, I'll move, move item three.
Second.
Okay, and we have someone who's signed up to speak, Carol Maher. I just want to read this. These are routine items, and they will be enacted by one roll call vote without separation of discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item is removed and to be considered separately. We will allow the public speaking to a consent item for three minutes each for a total of 15 minutes. Please state your name and address or ward prior to providing comments.
My name is Carol Maher, and I live downtown in Ward Three. I'm here to speak on consent item number 5A, Second Avenue Improvements from Court Avenue to I-235. Hip, hip, hooray for this fantastic project. Lots of great things are included, including lane reduction from three to, from four to three, increased parkway next to the well-used shared-use path, curb bumpouts to delineate parking and reduce pedestrian crossing times, more on-street parking. I'm hoping these will be paid and not free parking, right? Dedicated loading zone for Casey Center. A couple of observations on this one. Make sure it is used as a loading zone and not an overnight parking zone for semis. It's a tip, as from a downtown resident. You may want to consider not installing curb bumpouts in the loading zone, as those huge semis may chew those babies up. Lower speed limits, and $350,000 for the traffic signal at Second and Locust, and $250 for the one at Second and Grand. I really, really hope we take the opportunity to make these intersections much safer than, for pedestrians than they are now. Please consider adding leading pedestrian intervals, LPI, to cross Second Avenue at both Grand and Locust. An LPI gives a walk signal three to seven seconds prior to the green light, so that the pedestrian can be in the crosswalk and seen by turning vehicles. We have employed this strategy at some intersections, but these two could really benefit from this treatment. Last year, council members Simonson and Gatto praised this strategy, encouraged its use throughout the city. I hope that it can be used at these two high-risk intersections. Another known safety measure is no right turn on red. These two intersections beg for this treatment, and it should be considered. Additionally, the intersection at Second and Locust features the head-on game of chicken that happens when the two-way traffic from the east faces the one-way traffic from the west, and both want to turn. One wants to turn right, one wants to turn left. The other, this should be a posted no right turn and no left turn on red situation. With all the executive decision-making that has to happen for drivers to do the right thing at this intersection, pedestrians are really at risk. LPI, and no right turn, and no left turn on red should be included in the project for these intersections. Let's make it safer for pedestrians downtown and take advantage of this project to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to stay up and for 35.
Oh, okay.
Unless you didn't want to speak on it.
I did, I didn't know if you wanted.
Only because it's all going to be voted on, the consent.
Yes, you bet. Aren't you glad volleyball season's over? You got me back.
Hopefully you had a good time.
I did. Congratulations to the Merrill Mustangs, who are eighth-grade city champions, and Weeks Middle School, who are the seventh-grade city champions. I was there for both of them, so.
We do applaud that.
Yeah. Mayor Bosin and City Council, my name is Carol Maher, and I live, still live downtown in Ward Three. Wow, like manna from heaven, the state has 10 million bucks in Iowa Reinvestment Act funds that could fall into our hands. Thanks to our economic development team, who has the experts, expertise, and the connections to quickly pull together a robust grant application, the city is in a great position to scoop this up. Fantastic. And also, thank you for not applying for more funds to go to the stadium district. Lots of public funds have already been committed to this effort, and it's time for the developer to pull the trigger and make it happen. I find it interesting that Italy doesn't provide public funds for building sports stadiums, and Kraus is funding either a new stadium or extensive rehabilitation of the existing stadium for his Series A team there. But hey, you know I'm going to moan about how we're going to use this $10 million for yet another parking garage. As much as I don't like the use, I sure as heck hope we are not going to own this baby. These are money losers, and we need to cut our addiction to them. The Market District Master Plan says that the main goal is to make it a mostly walkable urban neighborhood. By putting in a parking garage. And there are three district projects already approved for the P&amp;Z process, and all three are severely overparked. And now this garage, this necessary evil, in a mostly walkable urban neighborhood. I really, really hope that the projects that have been approved will modify their parking plans, so they won't build as much parking capacity, thus ending the "my parking for only use for my residents" versus "our parking garage that can be used by all residents and visitors to the district." Separately, congratulations on $7.3 million sale on Ninth and Locust. More of that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the consent agenda on three.
We already did. We already did. It's been a while. So, I'll just say, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Consent items passed.
That's why we got you here, Jeff.
Keep track of everybody. Okay, number, we'll start our hearings. Item 42, on conveyance of excess city property located north of and adjoining Carlyle Road to the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority for future expansion of WRA facilities. We accept your main comments. Two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, I'll move item 42.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Next item is 43. It's on conveyance of city property known as the Ninth and Locust Parking Garage located at 81 Locust, a federal home loan bank, for $7,300,000. Council Communication Number 25-393. Anyone wishing to speak again, your main comments, two minutes before. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
I love this.
Seven, yes.
Yes, great.
Good job, Scott, and all your team.
Motion carries. Item 44, on vacation of C.B. and Q Street, right-of-way between Southeast 25th Court and Southeast 30th Street, in conveyance to the Des Moines Wastewater Reclamation Authority for the WRA Treatment Facilities Expansion Project. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor, I'll move 44, 44A, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 45, on request from Legacy 515 LLC, Adam Metzger, officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification for property at 520 35th Street, from high-density residential within a community node to community mixed-use within a community node, and to rezon the property from NX3 Neighborhood Nix District to RX2 Mixed-Use District to allow use of the property for small-scale office and commercial uses. A is the first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by applicant requires six votes. First, we'll hear from the parties of interest, and the applicant for rezoning, and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned. You'll be given five minutes to speak. And second would be your main comments from the general public. Anyone wishing to speak? I see none.
Seeing none, I'll move item 45, 45A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 46, on request from Global Des Moines ILLC, Joseph Zamo, officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification for the property at 6101 Southeast 14th Street, from community mixed-use within a regional node to industrial within a regional node, and to rezon the property from CXV Mixed-Use District to limited I1V Industrial District to allow the use of property for RV storage, including RV storage units and carports. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of the ordinance above. Again, parties of interest? Anyone else? Or your main comments?
I don't know if the officer's here, but I would just like to compliment this team. This is part of the original plan, when they took over this facility, and they did a remarkable job of bringing in new businesses to the South Side and, and this whole node there. This was, like I said, always part of the original design to do this. So I will move 46A and B. And thank you again. I'd like for you to.
Second.
Do some of the other, there's another area.
It's a moved and seconded, please vote.
Would be great for them to take over.
Yeah.
Down 14th.
Good job, Joe.
I got to vote still.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 47, request from Robert Bastow, owner, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification for property at 715 East 25th Street, from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed-use, and to rezon the property from N3C Neighborhood District to limited RX1 Mixed-Use District, to allow reuse of an existing building for a dog grooming business. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by applicant requires six votes. First, we'll hear from the parties of interest. If no one's here, if anyone else would like to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor, I'll move 47A and B.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 48, on request from Cold Storage Rehab LLC, Abby Gilroy, officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use for the property at 2814 7th Street, from industrial to neighborhood mixed-use, and rezon the property from I1 Industrial District to RX1 Mixed-Use District, to allow a mixed-use development, including row home buildings and a restaurant. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Sadie Tritton, B, well, yes, NDC, requires six votes. First, party of interest? Seeing none, anyone else would like to speak to this? If not?
Seeing none, pleasure to move item 48.
Second.
Good job.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Good job, Linda, good job, Carl.
Absolutely.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 49, on proposed amendments to Chapter 134 and 135 of the zoning ordinance relating to liquor tobacco sales definitions, review and approval procedures of a zoning variance, accessory dwelling units, and pool signs. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, your main comments from the general public.
See none, Your Honor, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was, I was going to move it. I appreciate staff's work, legals' work, Jeff, you and your team, and all those in the planning department. We've been talking about this the entire year, and I appreciate us tightening up the rules. I, I think these are all very common sense and wise things for the city to do. I also think that we can learn over time, and there might be additional steps for the council to take down the road. So thank you very much, I'll move it.
Can we do the second and third?
I, yeah.
Pursuant to Rule 42A?
Yeah. Pursuant to Rule 42A, I would move the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Josh, thank you.
No, I just wanted to add, I mean, I'm happy particularly on the tobacco restrictions. You know, this mirrors, I think, what Iowa City has already done. The question I still have is, to Councilmember Coleman's point, if there might be more that can be done, because I think, I, I think this will help, but, but I think the underlying concern, there's still going to be, there's still going to be, I think, even with this ordinance, new tobacco shops popping up, maybe too close to places that, that would be better suited for, for other uses. So I, I'd like us to look, keep looking, and maybe if there are, if city legal had recommendations for some low-hanging things beyond what Iowa City has done, I would welcome those, but, but to Councilmember Coleman's point, I think we should continue learning and keep an eye on this one.
Seven, yes.
Motion passes. The next item is number 50, on lease agreement with Joppa for property located in the vicinity of 2501 Maury Street. Your main comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Come on forward, state your name, your address or ward.
My name is Steve Carter, and I represent Bread of Life Church on the East, on East Railroad, 27, 27 East Railroad. And we want to say first, we honor our mayor and the city council members for allowing us this opportunity. I'm here to represent Joppa, or to make statement in regards to them. Joppa Village is shaping the future of making homelessness a thing of the past. I really believe that. And I stand here representing three generations of proactive leadership and ministry that began 75 years ago in the Chesterfield neighborhood. Started in 1940s, my grandfather, Pastor E.G. Carter, and later, my father, in 1950s, Pastor Aaron B. Carter. Also pastors, they worked tirelessly to serve both the spiritual and basic and human physical needs of the residents in this community. 30-plus years ago, I picked up where they left off. I'm passionate about transitioning the homeless and homeowners, feeding and providing clothes and for children, families, and meeting the human services needs of our seniors and veterans. I'm also here as a stakeholder of the Joppa Village project. I am asking for your support. Joppa Village is more than just building housing for the homeless. It will also open the doors of homeownership for training, employment, opportunities, and even more. Just a few weeks ago, we had the opportunity and privilege to host a meet-and-greet event, inviting residents to ask questions.
Okay, thank you. So is there one, anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'll, I'll fill in for Pastor Carter, if no one else wants to, wants to speak. I'll, I'll fill in how the neighborhood meeting went. I thought it went really, really well. We had a few neighbors there, we answered their questions, and, you know, a big thank you to Joe and his wife and his organization. A big thank you to my colleagues up here for agreement to, to know that this is a much better spot in our city than the other spot that we had looked at. So I want to thank all of you to just being patient until we found something that we knew was going to work. I also want to thank the members of the WRA that, that served with me on the board. They, they understood the issue that we had, and, and they all. They understood the issue that we had, and they all participated, and we'll be getting that agreement. And so, they played a role in this, the other communities. So I think we need to make sure that we thank them for that. Polk County also, the Polk County supervisors have stepped up in a big way for this project, and gonna continue to do that and help. And then the city staff, I know this has, this has been on everyone's mind, and we've worked through this, I think it's been a, I don't even know, it's been years, and so I just, we were patient, and I think this is the right spot, and I think we're gonna make a big difference. And we're behind you a hundred percent, Joe, and we're gonna, we're gonna get this to the finish line. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to move item fifty. I'm sure someone else wants to make any comments, but I'm happy to move item fifty.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment?
If you want a second, and then-
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, we appreciate your leadership on this. Joppa is one of the solutions that we've talked about for quite some time, so it's exciting to see it moving forward. And I always think about this, it's one thing to raise the money to build a project, it's an entirely other thing to fund ongoing operations. So, I'm just saying, we need to think about, not that we have any money, but we are here to support Joppa, and best of luck. Thank you.
You wanted to say how many units are planned for the first phase? Was it fifty?
There's fifty, there's fifty planned for the first phase, and, you know, and there'll be a wraparound service for the neighborhoods that they'll be able to enjoy, whether it be a food pantry or something like that, will be there. Any other of the services, the neighbors will be able to also participate in that, which I think that's a win-win for the entire neighborhood.
I think for people that don't know where it's at, where the old greenhouse, Des Moines Greenhouse was, where it's really the old Scott Avenue School, right?
Yeah.
So there's a building there that can be transformed, so from a standpoint of water, sewer, everything is there, it's a great opportunity. So, thank you, everyone, for all the work, thank you, Joe, and everybody in your organization. It gives us a great start with opportunity to expand. It's been moved and seconded, does anyone else want to speak?
I'll just quickly say, thanks for being, you know, showing great perseverance. There's always, you know, all these projects are hard, I've been for it, I've been against it, wanted it to land in a position that it has here, and this is really good. You said ten years ago, I just quickly searched my email, Joe and I had the first back-and-forth that I could find in two thousand and fourteen, so it's actually been eleven years since, since I think you built the first prototype. It still sits down by the thrift store, so congratulations. Thanks, Carl.
Anyone else want to?
I mean-
Yeah, right. I was going past you.
I'll just say, I mean, I reiterate what others have said, you know, it's great to see the work that Councilmember Gatto put in to bring this to his ward, and everything, the persistence of Joppa to get this done, I mean, if we're gonna tackle homelessness, we need an all-of-the-above solution, and this village is definitely a part of that. And so, this is not, not the end of this project, this is really just kind of the beginning, even though it doesn't seem like the beginning eleven years into it, but the key is getting it, getting it built and getting the services there for these folks, so that they're there on that ongoing basis. And, you know, we want to see this be successful, and we'll keep working on this and others, but this is an important, important milestone, and we look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Six yes, one abstained.
Motion carries. Fifty-one, on a lease agreement with EO Johnson Company, Inc., not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for leasing of multifunction devices, printer, copier, scanner, and fax machine, or used in the city operations for a two-year period to be paid in twenty-four monthly payments, Council Communication number twenty-five dash three eighty. Jermaine comments from the public, anyone wishing to speak?
Madam Mayor, I'll move item fifty-one.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-two, on an appeal from Sherman Hill Association, Matt Warner Blankenship, President of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to grant a certificate of appropriateness on a request from Colbert Properties Owner to construct a new house and garage at nineteen-seventeen Center in the Sherman Hill Local Historic District. Choose one alternative below, the Council Communication number twenty-five dash three nine nine. A is affirm the decision, B is reverse the decision and deny the application, C is remand the application to the Historic Preservation Commission. We will allow Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, up to ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the city council, for giving us a chance to come before you. My name is Randall Lejeune. We have lived at seven fifty-five Twentieth Street for thirty-one years. Our residence is directly across the street from the proposed structure. In the past, I have chaired the Historic District Commission for six years, and served as president and executive director of the Sherman Hill Association. The proposed structure clearly does not comply with the guidelines for new construction within the historic district. Approval was granted even though staff clearly stated that many changes would have to be made to bring it into compliance. The Sanborn maps, which show what was originally there, the Sanborn maps show that on the lot in question in nineteen oh one, there was a one-and-a-half-story single-family house, and from nineteen twenty to nineteen fifty-seven, it shows a two-story Victorian. Approval was also made using an example of other flat-roofed commercial multiple-family housing and a recent incompatible structure. I have found many research articles on the negative impact of building a modern-looking structure within a historic district. I have personally witnessed, in the historic district I grew up in in Denver, it starts with one bad approval, and later using that as a precedent transforms what was the city's shining example of historic pride into only a memory of what was there originally. In conclusion, I will read from one of the many articles I found, "A National Survey on the Negative Impact of New Modern-Looking Construction Within a Historic District," published by Forbes. "The negative impacts of new modern structures on a national historic district includes architectural incompatibility, loss of historical context, economic displacement, increased wear on historic sites, and regulatory challenges. Balance the need, balancing the need for modern development with the preservation."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can always send us an email if you want us to finish-
Canary Nicole mine.
Next speaker? You want to state your name and address or ward?
Good evening, Council, my name is Noah Brinkmeyer, I live at nineteen twenty-one Center Street, the property directly to the east of this proposal, and I also am on the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association Board. We wrote a letter saying, last Monday, we met with James Spiller, the architect for the project, as well as other concerned neighbors. James met with us in good faith, and was generous with his time, and provided thoughtful explanation of the design and the team's vision. We appreciate his openness and willingness to engage with the neighborhood, and we learned a lot from it. It was clear from this discussion that the project was being approached with care, and we believe that it has potential to be executed well. I'm gonna move forward to the issue here. Our appeal is not about opposing the new owners or their project, rather, it stems from concerns with the process by which neighborhood voices have not been meaningfully included to learn about, evaluate, and provide feedback on the project of such scale and unique and seemingly divergent design. The neighborhood and adjacent property owners were given very limited time to review the proposal before the HPC hearing. And critically, although the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association communicated its concerns and requested additional time through a letter sent in the advance of the meeting, this letter was not shared with the commission by our representative. That failure is why we are here. Move forward here, we want to emphasize that this does not need to be an acrimonious situation. We value the owners as future neighbors, and believe that there is a better process that can lead to a better outcome for both the neighborhood and the project. Accordingly, Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association respectfully requests that the city council remand this matter to the Historic Preservation Commission on an expedited basis, so that their project can begin and receive further consideration with more meaningful neighborhood input. This would allow for the HPC to evaluate the project with a more complete record, and ensure the community perspectives are fully heard, and allow the concerns of the neighbors to be heard and hopefully alleviated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, again, state your name, address, or ward.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Nicole Beaman, I'm a current resident of Johnston, Iowa. My husband, Rob, and I are the owners of nineteen seventeen Center Street. Rob and I have been looking forward to investing in the Sherman Hill neighborhood by constructing a single-family owner-occupied house. On August twentieth, we presented this project with plans to the Historic Preservation Commission. Prior to that meeting, our design team met and worked with city staff multiple times over the course of two months to refine the project prior to the meeting with Historic Preservation Committee. At that meeting, the project plans were presented and was unanimously approved, ten to zero. At that hearing, a letter of opposing view written by a neighbor was shared. The commission discussed and determined that our project met the architectural guidelines set forth in the Architectural Guidelines for New Construction in Des Moines Historic Districts. That document from the National Park Service and Guidelines for New Construction state that new construction should also be distinct from the old, and must not attempt to replicate historic buildings elsewhere on site, and to avoid creating a false sense of historic development. The commission had a great discussion and shared comments like, "I like the bold design. I like this design, I believe it fits the Sherman Hill area nicely. It feels like it is part of a cool and dynamic neighborhood." Finally, I believe the opposition comments to be short-sighted, and noted that there were many more styles in the Sherman Hill area than the writer of the email let on. The home represents a continuing evolution in home design, I find the design to be stunning and to fit well in the area. Someday, this will be considered a historic home. This project was scheduled to start digging earlier this month, but due to this appeal, it's already caused us financial and emotional stress, and we have been delayed by at least six weeks. The project is ready to break ground. Any further delay would likely lead to a postponement well over six months due to winter. This would be unfortunate. As our project has followed the city processes since the beginning and received unanimous approval from the Historic Preservation Committee, the city council-appointed entity tasked with reviewing and determining what is appropriate for new construction. Rob and I have been residents in Des Moines metro area since two thousand and six. Thank you for your time.
If you'd like to speak to this item for two minutes, state your name and address or-
Brad Argo, nineteen eighteen Lainer Street, one of the adjacent neighbors. The one component I think missed by the proposed owners, builders of the lot, is that we don't have any of this style of home in our neighborhood right now. Sorry, just ran from a meeting, literally ran here.
Thank you, Brad.
Guess age is catching up to me here. We don't have any of this style of home, and what we're worried about is this setting precedent for this style of home in the future. We've had this with row homes, where the first row home was done nicely, the rest used poor-quality materials and bad architecture. So, we just feel, as a neighborhood, there's no mechanism for the neighbors to be heard. That should take place at HPC. HPC did not play, or listened to, our request, which was just to simply delay this by one month, to give the neighborhood a little more time to look at the design. That's all we've asked for at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, turn it over to the council.
Yeah, but I would like to, to move fifty-two C, to remand this back to the Historic Preservation Commission, and there was one piece in the record in particular that I struggled with, and that is, one of the commissioners was involved in the transaction. And so, I would like to remand with the instruction that that commissioner, Mr. Tanzer, remove himself from consideration upon remand. I think that's how we can get a fair record in front of us if this comes back. So, that's my motion, fifty-two C, to remand the application to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
May I add an item to that, to make sure that the Neighborhood Association is notified of that meeting date and location, just so for those who want to participate. And I'll also make a statement as an architect, since I'm the only architect on the council. These are tough decisions, they are. I think of San Francisco and all these beautiful row homes on the hills, but there are missing pieces throughout that city, and there is some beautiful, more modern architecture that fits the scale, and I'm not making any comment of this plan. But it's, it's a challenge, because we have pockets like this, and we will continue to have pockets like this. And I appreciate remanding it back and giving the Neighborhood Association an opportunity.
And is there some type of timeframe, too, only because of, as soon as possible?
Yeah, I would say if, if it can be expedited, I mean, I would expect this, if possible, at the next Historic Preservation Commission meeting, if that can provide sufficient notice to comply with the law, but I would prefer to see that move as quickly as possible.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item? Twenty-one, on request from Highland Park Community Development Association, Inc., Philip Herman, Officer, to rezone thirty-eight fifty-one Sherman Boulevard from N three A Neighborhood District to Limited NX One Neighborhood Mix District to allow the renovation of the existing one-household dwelling and construction of a two-household dwelling and a two accessory dwelling units for a total of five residential dwelling units.
We're only setting the date of hearing, so I don't want to speak to the merits of this, but I have, I have met with neighbors of the area, and the date that is proposed for the hearing does not work for them. The next meeting does not work for the developers. The developer here, I, I meet with, I meet with them tomorrow, I haven't met them yet. I consulted the attorney about options, because I don't want to create any, you know, undue effect on the process. And I guess, unless we delayed it until December in hopes that that appeased all parties, the, the, Jeff, our attorney, has suggested that we could open the hearing on the third and keep it open to receive additional testimony on the seventeenth, which I guess we don't set right now, but that would, that would be my plan, and I just want to forewarn everybody that I hope, at the end of the hearing on the third, you'll join me in considering continuing that to allow some of the adjacent neighbors to attend and provide testimony. Does that work? Then I'll, I'll move item twenty-one.
Second.
The mood is seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item forty-one is amending section one oh two dash four ten of the municipal code regarding offense and fine related to prohibited camping.
Move.
Second.
So, I was gonna make one comment. Unfortunately, was unable to reach consensus on alternative language to address the liability concern, although I still think that that would be possible. And one of the other things in doing some of the research on the, on that piece, you know, the concern is about Fourth Amendment constitutional rights potentially being violated related to the affirmative defenses. And one of the things that is very clear, the Grants Pass decision, and I'll look to the city attorney, the Grants Pass decision only addresses the Eighth Amendment, and there is still risk with the existing ordinance. We are putting our officers at risk, more risk than they were if the ordinance was not on the books, that they could be sued and have liability for Fourth Amendment search and seizure violation, I believe. Is that a risk that they would face?
I, I think that's, it's a fair statement to say that any- I think that's a fair statement to say that any legislation that council has that creates a violation, that would be a true statement for any ordinance that is a simple misdemeanor.
Yeah, so...
Can I just ask a quick question? Are you saying all of our existing punitive ordinances or enforcement ordinances would all fall under the statement that Josh has made?
The same risk. I mean, we knew that we were adding risk for officers when this was passed. Now, we're trying to say that we want to remove liability, but only the liability that provides protection for the folks who are being cited in this case. So, if the true aim was to remove the liability from this ordinance, the simple way to do that would be to remove the ordinance in its entirety. Now, I know that's not what's in store here, but let's be serious about if we are trying to protect our officers from a future lawsuit. The action tonight does not do so. There's still risk, and in fact, perhaps greater likelihood by removing the affirmative defenses in some regards that the broader principle gets challenged sooner. So, I still have concerns with this. I still can't support it. I still think there are better ways if you want to address the affirmative defenses and the liability. And I wish that we had taken the time to try and work through that, because I still think if all parties would have gotten around the table with support from this body, we could have found something that was better than taking away all of the affirmative defense.
Mayor, I would also like to make a comment. I am also willing to vote no, only in that I was hopeful that we would have had an opportunity to find some clarifying language that could be acceptable to all parties. However, having said that, I support the will of our council. I'm not an attorney. Of the attorneys that I spoke with, I spoke with six, and there was not a consensus amongst the attorneys that I spoke with. Why should that be a surprise? But if the question is yes or no, I'm going to have to say no.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, please vote.
Five, yes. Two, no. Motion passes.
Shame.
The next item is 53, I believe. Review of Zoning Board of Adjustment Decision Conditionally Granting a Use Variance for a Commercial Service, Studio or Instructional Service, Use Fitness Center within an F Flood District on property at 41461st Street owned by 41461st Street LLC. Choose one alternative below. A, the city council remands the decision and the order to the zoning board of adjustment for further study. The effective date of the board's decision will be deferred for 30 days from the date of this remand. B is the city council takes no action to review the decision and the order. The decision of the board will become final on November 19, 2025. C is the city council declines to remand the decision to the zoning board of adjustment. The decision of the board becomes final on this date.
I'll move 53C, so the decline to remand and the decision should become final on this date.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Number 54 is issuance of $66,880,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, levying a tax for payment and approving the tax exemption certificate and the continuing disclosure certificate.
Move, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
The motion carries. Item 55, issuance of $6,350,000 of taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2025B, levying a tax for payment and the continuing disclosure certificate.
Move, Your Honor, item 55.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Carl.
Carl, it didn't hit.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 56. Amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as Follows, Council Communication Number 25-389. A is parking modification, University Avenue between 31st Street and 63rd Street. B is traffic control change, intersection of 13th Street and Mulberry Street. C is code modification, parking of trailers for authorized city use. D is parking modification, Garfield Avenue between Idaho Avenue and East 15th Street. E is parking modification, peak hour parking restriction removal on the following streets in conformance with Connect Downtown. One is 8th Street between Mulberry Street and Park Street. Two is 9th Street between Mulberry Street and Park Street. F is code correction, code corrections to match field conditions on the following streets. One is Grand Avenue between 9th Street and 10th Street. Two is Locust Street between 9th Street and 10th Street. G is corner clearance parking restrictions. One, Southeast 5th Street and East Wators Avenue. Two is East 29th Street and Guthrie Avenue. Three is East 32nd Court and East Washington Avenue. Four is 39th Place and Madison Avenue. Five is 49th Street and Madison Avenue. Six is 53rd Street and Aurora Avenue. And seven is 56th Street and Forest Avenue. With that, I'll entertain the motion.
There's a lot...
A lot of changes.
There's a lot there. I don't see any that I'm opposed to if somebody wants to move the...
I will move the entirety of it, 56, A through G, and pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. 57 is amending Chapter 135 of the Municipal Code relating to trash recycling, refuge locations, and review and approval of procedures.
Move item 57 pursuant to Rule 42A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
This is... There's a lot more in here than the 10 words that are on the agenda. Thanks so much.
You seconded it first?
I did second it, yeah.
Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, before we go to 58, may I make a comment, only because I don't know where else to put this, but I would like to compliment staff. And the city is selling a parking garage, and that was my first job, was working on that parking garage.
I'm so sorry.
But I'm complimenting staff because even at that time, the request was made to elevate the clear height of the first floor and to have that ground floor flat so that it could become retail or other use as the city develops that had that flexibility. And we're still talking about doing those same things. So, we're thinking forward. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our public's request to speak. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, or up to 20 speakers for a total of one-hour agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those type of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is to hear your comments, and if there is a need to follow up, we will get it to the appropriate staff or council to follow up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your comments. The first person is Ben Lynch.
I'm Ben Lynch, Des Moines lawyer and activist, Ward 1. Last year, you criminalized sleeping outside, directing the police to imprison and find the homeless. This created barriers to job, school, and housing. Today's amendment makes a bad law worse by removing the language that protected people when the city had no shelter beds open. If a bed isn't available, you're punishing existence, not compliance. How can you punish someone for having nowhere to go? That's not going to solve anything, and you all know that. We should be investing in housing, treatment, and mental health services. My remarks are directed at the five members voting yes on this cruel and illegal ordinance. Chris Coleman, you invoke your Catholic faith while advancing cruelty. Jesus said, "Blessed are the poor." Your vote contradicts the Bible, and I'm going to wait for Joe Gatto to come back, because he needs to hear this.
Just keep going.
Where's he at? He needs to hear this. He doesn't get to run away from his vote.
Okay. Your time is running, so...
I'll wait.
That's fine.
I got three minutes. He doesn't want to hear it. That's why he ran away. We'll save Joe for last. Connie Bosin, we'll avoid your flower shop and apple stand at the fair. You take donations from Kroto and real estate developers to screw the little guy. Shame on you. You know better. Linda Westergaard, your campaign slogan was, "Linda listens." What a joke. Your vote shows otherwise. She's a real estate agent at RE/MAX. Avoid her at all costs. Carl Voss, remember meeting me downtown last summer? You got scared and ran off like a coward. You punished the poor from a distance. You know better. Joe Gatto, his seat's empty. He makes the vote, but he walks off and runs and hide when he hears comments coming his way. Avoid his Italian restaurant called Barata's on the south side. He unethically sought grants and forgivable loans for personal gain.
Okay.
Yet he sits here, targeting those with nothing. He's not a leader, and he's also running for Polk County Supervisor. Do not vote for him. Many of your constituents are one paycheck away from being homeless.
I think this is it.
No.
We've cleared enough of the tax.
Many of your constituents are one paycheck away from homelessness. Most don't share your wealth or privilege.
This ordinance will clog up the courts when we sue you. Don't criminalize... Don't criminalize survival. Stop being bullies and vote no. Shame on all of you.
Okay.
You're cowards.
Lo Keenan Crowe, Director of Policy and Advocacy at One Iowa and Ward 1. Resident homelessness is something we care deeply about at One Iowa. If you look at the statistics, about 10% of our youth population here in the U.S. is LGBTQ identified, but about 40% of our homeless youth population is LGBTQ identified, and the numbers still indicate extreme discrepancies well into adulthood. I continue to be frustrated that when it comes to this issue, that the majority of the council is ignoring the best available evidence we have. There is data, there are high-quality studies, there is evidence from other cities that have implemented these ordinances, and it is all overwhelmingly negative. Now, we have new data specifically for Polk County, and it underscores exactly what the studies predicted. Things are getting worse, rather than better, for our neighbors. On top of that, there's now a claim that we can't possibly tie enforcement to the availability of shelter, or we will incur additional legal liability. So, we have a policy that isn't doing, but it purports to do, that is incurring additional liability, and that runs counter to the available evidence. The obvious answer is to scrap this policy, rather than making it more cruel. Now, here's the serious question that I haven't heard an answer to, but I am hopeful that we will eventually hear one from the ordinance's supporters. What fact, what new piece of evidence would change your mind? What would that be? What could I present to you that would convince you that this policy is not just ineffective, but actively harmful? What would that evidence look like, and how could we find it together? And if you don't have an answer, or if your answer is that there isn't any evidence that would change your mind, then your belief is definitionally unreasonable and should not be the basis for our public policy. So, I look forward to hearing this answer. I look forward to this answer being built into the evaluation criteria for this ordinance, and I sincerely hope that when you see that evidence, you reverse this harmful ordinance, that you let the evidence and the evidence alone lead future conversations. Thank you.
Catherine Price. Catherine Price. Deborah Kraus. Nathan Erickson. Cassandra St. Clair. Nina Rickman. I don't know if I...
Good evening. My name is Nina Rickman, and I am in Ward 3. I am a volunteer for the organization called the Urban Bicycle Food Ministry, and every Thursday night, we make food and we give it away. We make burritos and sandwiches, and we take it out and deliver it to over 600 of our neighbors who are unhoused or food insecure. I want to tell you a story from the street. This is a story of Maria. Maria is like a lot of people that we serve. She's quiet, she's unassuming, and she's appreciative. She's someone we see weekly, and the best way I can describe it is that Maria's situation is complicated. She's staying outside of SIS right now because she can't go in. Even if there was a bed, she was kicked out because of an altercation. Maria has a severe mental illness, and Maria has experienced a lot of trauma. So, Maria doesn't trust people. Maria is scared all the time. She hears voices that are very much outside of her control because of her illness. When you talk with her, what you hear is a quiet desperation, because Maria doesn't want to be homeless, but she's out of options, and she's really scared. So, I want to take a moment to say thank you to the council for what you have done so far to address this issue. It's a small step in a positive direction, but the ordinance that passed today has the potential to heap harm onto those that are already down. And we need to return the focus of this city, of this leadership, to humanity, because these people, people like Maria, they are not different than you and me. They deserve care, and they do not need another reason to be scared, that they could be penalized for being poor or sick and having to sleep outside. So, please, just consider people like Maria. Thank you.
I'll move item 58, A through G. Receiving file.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Carl seconded it.
Motion passes.
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Shame on you all.
This may adjourn.
Shame. You're a town...[1774.48]